The Board of Equalization and your case has not yet been called. We're going to convene as the City Council. We're going to do the business of the City Council and then we'll reconvene as the Board of Equalization. If you cannot stay and you had something to present, we'll have a staff member come over and meet you on the side. So just come over and line up under the clock if you're in that case. Thank you.
(inaudible)
That's all right. How's it going?
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jaram. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks today. Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me first of all take the opportunity, before we sit, ladies and gentlemen, let me first of all take the opportunity to thank Councilmember Palermo. As you saw on the agenda, he was due to give remarks today. I asked him if I could do it today because we have, we had a gentleman who passed away last week who is a gem and a pillar in this community as far as many of us were concerned, especially as it relates to trying to stop the violence in our community. Dave Gerro's was a nonstop individual in terms of working with the community, coming to the community, assessing what needs to be done in the community, picking his, what he felt that he could do best in this community, and he engaged in over 300 prayer walks so that people in this community would be, would understand that there are people all over this community that are concerned about the violence, it's not just in a certain segment of the community, but all over. And Dave Gerro's is a gentleman that is going to be missed very greatly, but my understanding is he's going to keep that work up and, and I know with the Empowerment Network and other folks that are involved that that work is probably going to continue. But I wanted first of all to take a moment of silence to reflect and remember on Dave Gerro's, and then we have a proclamation that we're going to read just a little bit later on, but for right now, we could have a moment of silence for Dave, please. Thank you all very much. You can be seated.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall of the legislative chambers.
Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, though, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Before we begin with the major portion of our agenda, as I mentioned earlier, we have a proclamation that we're going to read for Dave, and I understand there's some people here that will receive that proclamation. Prior to that, though, and if they could make their way down to the front here, that would be beneficial for us and, and help us expedite this a little bit if we could, if those who are here for Dave could come to the front. Prior, before we do that, though, Councilmember Pete Festerson has some guests that he would like to announce in the, in the chamber today. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I had the pleasure of speaking to the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative over the lunch hour today. We have about 30 of them here today to witness city and county government and learn about our happenings here in this country. They represent an impressive amount of different countries in Southeast Asia on their visit here and are now all considered honorary citizens as of our presentation at lunch today. So I want to acknowledge them, please.[594.54][594.54](applause). And I'll maybe say one more thing about them, too, in the context of our next presentation here by Councilman Gray. They asked lots of great questions about city government, and one of the things they asked about was our crime rates, crime rates and our partnerships and this agenda item for Reverend Dave Gerro's here. And one of the questions was, how would that work continue? And it made me really think about that question and answer and respect that that's really maybe the best tribute to him is that that work will continue, not just him on the ground for the last 10 or 15 years, maybe with Pastor Williams there, but its proliferation through the Empowerment Network and the 360 organization that now exists and the Omaha Police Department and the direct benefit we're having with our community on those things, not to mention some great results with the fewest amount of homicides in our city in this last year in decades. So I think a lot of that is attributable to his work, and it really made me think when I got that question from this group, what a great question that was for what we're about to talk about here in a minute. So, thank you for being here and thanks for asking that question this morning.
Thank you all for being here. As I mentioned, we have a proclamation that we wanted to read up in regards to Reverend Dave Gerro's, and it reads as follows. Whereas Dave Gerro's was born in Minneapolis, the eldest of five children, and whereas Dave married his wife Cheryl in 1969, and the couple had four children, and whereas Dave and Cheryl helped establish Christ for the City International in Omaha and were instrumental in bringing the organization's headquarters to this city, and whereas Reverend Gerro's was devoted to helping reduce violence within our communities, and whereas since 2007 Reverend Gerro's mobilized over 300 prayer walks and gatherings in Omaha promoting a culture of togetherness and fellowship, and whereas Dave worked tirelessly to bring people together from all walks of life to join in prayer walks with a, with a violent, when a violent event impacted a neighborhood, and whereas Dave Gerro's worked in ministry over 50 years and was dedicated to the city of Omaha, bringing healing and support to communities in times of need. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Omaha, that the City Council of the city of Omaha declares Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, Dave Gerro's Day in Omaha.[752.12][752.12](applause). And I'm going to give this to somebody, but you all have, you all have an opportunity to say a few words as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was our privilege-
You can use a microphone. There you go. Yeah, yeah. They may not hear you here.[793.43][793.43](laughing).
This is an extemporaneous speech, okay? It was our privilege to be here. We love the city. We've been here 20, 20-some years now. Dave's heart was here. He was devoted to bringing communities together, overlapping circles. His, his heart was love one another. And, yeah, he, that's where he worked, that's what he wanted, and he was extremely blessed to have the privilege to interface with civic leaders and with the police department and community leaders, and it was just a blessing. Thank you so much.
Yes, and let me just say, because I know there may be one or two other council members who may want to say something as well, but I did want to say to you that, you know, the reflection of what's here, the family members, the friends, the Empowerment Network, the police department, the school board, all of these folks coming together for, for, for Dave and for this city to reduce violence in the community, so it's a reflection of his work, it's a reflection of the family and the things that you all do together, and it's also a reflection of the work that's done in this city every day by our police officers, our Empowerment Network and others.
That's right.
So, my thanks to all of you today for Reverend Dave Gerro's and for the work that you all continue to do tirelessly every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you.[884.35][884.35](applause). And you all don't have to stay for the rest of our city council meeting, but we did want to thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an ordinance to create multiple improvement district number 2019-02 for the purpose of improving two areas along South 30th Street near Dewey Avenue by installing storm and sanitary sewage, addressing sidewalks and paving roadway areas.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, six to zero. Item seven, an ordinance to create multiple improvement district number 2019-03 for the purpose of improving three areas along Park Avenue and South 31st Street between Marcy Street and Woolworth Avenue by installing storm and sanitary sewage, addressing sidewalks and paving roadway areas.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, six to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the Ainsworth and Beverly Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2230 and 2236 Jones Street in amount up to $285,000. A is a request from the applicant to delay the vote until the May 21st city council meeting, B is communications in opposition, C is communication received from David Palladino.
The public hearing was held, this, this, just a vote today.
Motion to layover at May 21st.
I would suggest laying over, I think, eight and nine.
Eight and nine?
Yes.
Motion to layover eight and nine? Okay. Okay, it's moved and seconded to layover items eight and nine. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think this may get laid over today, but I just wanted to explain why I'm not supporting that layover and didn't support the layover the first time either. I think it's just a difference of opinion about how to approach what are outstanding code violations with this applicant, but I just wanted to state that I do support the redevelopment process and I do support additional housing projects, affordable housing projects in our community. But I'm not supportive of this application or delaying the vote because I think applying for TIF, which is what we have before us on a separate project on this item, shouldn't be used necessarily as a carrot, but the expectation of someone applying for TIF on our project should be that they are compliant with basic city standards, and that's not the case in this, in this respect. There have been a number of outstanding code violations through, on properties of this applicant throughout the city, and those are being worked on, which I think is positive. But it's also true that I think seven of them have been resolved, but since the time we laid this over, another 24 have been reported and are not resolved yet, and a lot of those are in my district, 12 of them, in fact, in a property that I toured that is totally unacceptable and not safe and not healthy for kids and families. So, my opinion is, before we even consider another project that could include city incentives, basic code violations have to be taken care of and should be the expectation of even applying for that. So that's why I'm not supporting the extension of this product, of this layover, and most likely will not support TIF on the project unless all those things are corrected. And frankly, as it applies to the unit I saw, I don't see how that's going to be possible, but I sure hope work gets done quickly and they can prove us wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson. Just a very quick comment on my part. You know, it, for, for me, this is an issue of trust, and I have been to several of the apartments that are already owned by this individual. These apartments are, in my judgment, un-reparable. They need to be torn down, but what's even worse for me is that during one inspection, when our inspection person explained to this gentleman that you can't paint over mold, that you have to remove it, and then to go into that building, go into that specific apartment, and watch the person who was working for this gentleman paint over the mold in front of my face, that doesn't send a very good message to me. So I will not be supporting this. I'm, I'm assuming that the layover will occur. I'm, I'm okay with that one way or another, it just gives me a chance to vote no later on because I, I have trust issues with this, and that's not going to be overcome by laying it over no amount of time as far as I'm concerned at this point. So, with that, there are no further lights. Roll call for the layover.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Jaram. Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed, four to two. Item 10, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Prince Party Hall located at 2325 South 27th Avenue. A is communication in opposition. The applicant has submitted a request to withdraw the application.
Second, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 11, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Gerta's Bakery located at 5180 Leavenworth Street.
Public hearing is today for item number 11. Proponents, please.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kim Reeve. You want the business address or the?
Yes, please.
5180 Leavenworth Street.
Okay, and just answering any questions we might have?
Yes.
Is that why you're here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr., Ms. Melton.
Thank you, Kim. I, I just wanted to take a moment just to recognize and say I'm sorry for your loss of Gerta in the last year because she was such a fabulous woman, and I'm so glad that you've decided to continue and keep kind of Gerta's spirit open with Gerta's restaurant right there on Leavenworth. I lived, during law school, I rented a house just about three doors down from Gerta's and my two boys. It was their favorite place. We would walk down there all the time, and I would even go back pregnant with Jimmy. I just craved her, the noodles that were made, and I know you know that because you saw me in there. But Gerta is near and dear to my heart. She made the cakes for my wedding. Kim actually brought them there, and I just have to say that after hearing of that, I was afraid that maybe Gerta's wouldn't continue, and I know you're working so hard and you're doing that to continue her memory, and I just want to say thank you, and I look forward to continuing to go to Gerta's and cheers to her every time we're there because I know she's watching down on you and your kids and everybody. So, thanks for continuing her kind of legacy.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna end up crying.[1354.01][1354.01](laughing).
Thank you. It's been moved, there's most, there's a motion, second to approve, Mr. Paul.
Just a little history, before Gerta established her restaurant there, I don't know if you recall, that was called the Downs Bakery.
Yes.
So you talk about a little history here, I can remember going there, it's not only Gerta's, but also Downs Bakery.
And it was a bakery before that, so it's 100 years.
Oh, I didn't know that was before my time.
Well, mine too.[1380.41][1380.41](laughing).
That was nothing before your time.[1385.13][1385.13](laughing).
Whoa, exactly, that kind of day, guys, huh?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 12 through 15 were held on March 19th, 2019. Moved and seconded to approve, no lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 through 45 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing nobody move, the public, oh, I'm sorry.[1457.01][1457.01](laughing). Which item?
Item number 37.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lysia Goodwin. I live at 9811 Immett Street.
And what would you like to say in favor of it?
Certainly. So, as I said, I'm Lysia Goodwin. I am Dan Goodwin Sr.'s granddaughter, and if you don't know my grandfather personally, I must tell you what an exceptional person that he is. Grandpa is the epitome of integrity, perseverance, humility, and generosity. I always marveled at his ability to transform the trajectory of his life purely by his own determination. You see, we're talking about an African-American man born in 1932 to a family of 14. At the age of 16, he dropped out of high school to join the Navy. Although he was turned away initially due to his age, the following year he returned and served his country for four years. Following his service, grandfather graduated from Tech High at the age of 22. He was able to attend barber school on the GI Bill, and one year after an apprenticeship with his older brother, grandpa opened Goodwin Spencer Street Barber Shop. 64 years later, his business is still open and he cuts hair at the age of 87. In those 64 years of business, grandfather is, has been much more than a barber, and his shop, as it is commonly referred to, is more than a barber shop. Dan Goodwin Sr. was active in the civil rights movement both locally and nationally. He and others organized peaceful demonstrations, brought the likes of Malcolm X to Omaha, and even ran for city council. If you've ever seen the Academy Award nominated film, A Time for Burning, you should definitely watch it, but you should also know that portions of the film were filmed at the barber shop, and grandpa definitely had something to say. His barber shop has been everything from Blacktown Hall to a bank, a political office, a museum, and a launching pad for dozens of other barbers in the city of Omaha. Now, this is who Dan Goodwin Sr. is to the public, but to me, he is my grandpa. He is my hero. Grandpa gave me my first dollar, took all of us cousins to any restaurant we wanted every Monday for years, and he taught me how to do a real push-up, and he proved that you can eat 10 scoops of ice cream every day and still have killer biceps. More importantly, he taught me how to live by the golden rule, that other, that you are to treat others the way that you want to be treated. He has demonstrated that even if the whole world is against you, that you must be consistent in your character and that you can overcome anything and thrive. My grandpa, Dan Goodwin Sr., never set out to do anything in his life for recognition or for show, but he lived his life to do right by himself, his family, and his community. So as you can see, it's just like I said before. My grandfather is an exceptional individual, and I can see no better way to honor his legacy than by renaming Spencer to Wort Streets along North 24th Street as Dan Goodwin Sr. Street after him. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, if I, if I might add a comment or two to that as well. For those of you who don't, don't know, I, you know, well, all of you know that I spent 30 years in television, but I had a couple of signature haircuts (laugh) that I'm sure some of you all may remember. One in particular (laugh), all of those were done by her grandfather. So, he's well deserved, and he's been in the business for a long time, but more importantly, he, as you mentioned, he has been a pioneer in the civil rights movement. And, and that barber shop was, every time you go in there, there's nothing but a political discussion that's going to go on all day long, so, and I loved it, and this is an honor that, that your grandfather greatly deserves. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, there doesn't seem to be any other lights. Is there a motion and a second for approval for our resolutions?
Move to approve 16 through 45.
Second, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 through 45 are approved, six to zero.
Thank you all.[1733.65][1733.65](applause).
Item 46, an ordinance declaring the necessity of acquiring for use by the city of Omaha private property for the purpose of the 89th Circle Street Improvement District.
Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, or Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. And then was there, what do you guys get a postpone, 47 to 49?
Yeah, we're gonna, for, for those in the audience, Councilmember Brinka Harding is, is not feeling well today, and we as a council, we, we, we never, we never vote without all seven of our council members here, especially when we're talking about an important item, like, items like 46, 47, and 48.
I'd motion to layover 47 through 49 for one week.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Item 50, a resolution that the city council of the city of Omaha opposes LB 550 and urges
the Nebraska State Legislature to defeat this bill and allow municipalities to retain the flexibility to use well-reason strategically imposed occupation taxes to mitigate the need for property tax increases.
This is something that I had placed on the agenda because I have the, we have, we have a concern, and then the city has a concern that if this piece of legislation were to pass, the city could lose as much as $5 million or maybe even a little bit more than $5 million. So I had this placed on the agenda for us to, to vote hopefully in, in opposition to, hopefully in favor of this resolution, in opposition to running the risk of losing that $5 million.
Got to call a public hearing.
Oh, is it a public, oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Public hearing on the agenda, agenda item number 50 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing, you got on this agenda item now.
I've been trying to say something from-
Name and address. Name and address for the record, and it's got to be on this item, on this item.
My name is Williams Eugene Bush, and my address is Nebraska. I'm homeless, so Nebraska, I've been all around there. I was trying to figure out what, 45, 46, and 47, all the way consistent, I kept up as fast and as long as I could keep up, um-
Yeah, but we're on item number 50 now.
But I've been saying something since 46 to 47, when she was explaining about her grandpa, Mr. Goodwin. Like, I am somebody that been a part of Nebraska whole community since the age of maybe eight or nine, and I'm 42.
Yeah, but Mr. Goodwin was several items back as well. We, we gotta, we gotta talk about-
I still don't know what's going on with, I don't know what's going on with, like, this is the state or your facts and things that you, that, that you see in a community that's wrong and what's going on, but you go fast, you don't, you know, you don't, and when somebody say something, you, it's like, you, you, you still going, you still go, you go quick, like, it's something to hide or something, like, I'm, um-
We're, we're-
I'm here for a reason.
Let me, let me stop you, okay? We're on item number 50.
I went to 47.
Item number 50.
Can you back up to 47?
No, we can't go back to 47.
You never even did anything with 47.
We laid it over. It wasn't a public hearing. The public hearing was over and we laid it over for a week because we have a council member that's absent today.
Right, I remember you saying that, Mr. Gray.
Yes, I do.
Um, all right, maybe I was wrong, I'm sorry, um, but I wanted to address what I was talking about as far as that. I'll let you continue.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else here in, in opposition or in favor of item 50? Public hearing is closed.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, Ms. Melton.
I just want to say that, but for me, this has nothing to do with to tax, to not tax, to reduce taxes, this has nothing to do with taxes, this has to do with local control and allowing municipalities to determine what we're going to do with, with our city. So I'm, I'm in support of this, of, of your resolution, because again, I don't like it that they sit down and link in and direct, specifically I think that's valid, but they could probably change the law and reduce the taxes of the state, so choose to reduce the taxes. I wanted to get that.
Thank you.[1383.11][1383.11][laughing] Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 50 is approved, six to zero. Item 51, an ordinance declaring the necessity of acquiring for use by the city of Omaha private property for the purpose of constructing the Elkhorn WWTF decommissioning and interceptor sewer extension project.
Public hearing on agenda item number 51 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 52, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Design Development LLC to implement the 49-place tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for a redevelopment site located at 209 South 49th Street in amount up to $883,105.
Public hearing on agenda item number 52 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 53, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase agreement with Carver Financial Innovation Center LLC to convey the property located at 2414-2416 Lake Street and 2410 Lake Street.
Public hearing on agenda, agenda item number 53 is today. Proponents, please. Welcome, Mr. Maroney.
Michael Maroney, 2221 North 24th Street, the manager of the Carver Financial Innovation Center, the building that does the question here today. I just want to say that, one, our acquisition of the building would be consistent with the North Omaha revitalization plan that was approved years ago by this council, and the intent is to bring business and financial services to that area.
Thank you.
And any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 54, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group number 2019-06.
Public hearing on agenda item number 54 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for the removal of litter on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group number 2019-07.
Public hearing on agenda item number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for the removal of litter on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group number 2019-07.
Public hearing on agenda item number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Patrick Rowland in the amount of $27,000 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the fiscal year 2018 Violent Gang and Gun Crime Reduction Grant Program.
Public hearing on agenda item number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 57, an ordinance to men's section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classification entitled "Grant Accountant Personnel Board" recommends approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 58, an ordinance to men's section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classification entitled "Quality Assurance Supervisor Personnel Board" recommends approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 58 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 59, an ordinance to approve exercising both one-year options in an agreement with AOT Public Safety Corporation.
Public hearing on agenda item number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 60, an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchase agreement with the city of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation to provide funds for the lease purchase of and the ref, and the financing of police radio communication equipment, a fire station alerting system, a vehicle for the mayor's office, and a library radio frequency identification system, and to refund all the outstanding amounts of the corporation's lease revenue bonds in the amount of $9,425,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 61, body basics fitness equipment appeals the rejection of their bid from January 9, 2019 for the exercise equipment maintenance and repair service provider, RFP, project.
Public hearing on agenda item number 61 is today. Proponents, please.
Tracy Stratman, Recreation Manager, here to answer any questions for the city.
Thank you.